All right, we're waiting for this to go live. I show that we are live. I'm going to go ahead and call to order the regular city council meeting for September 8th, 2020. For those that don't know, we were still under ordinance 1000, which allows some council members to be virtual. I have council member Anderson and council member Saunders live and visible on Zoom. What did I say? Council member Mosley, council member Saunders. Okay, so with that invocation and pledge of allegiance will be council member Williams.
have a moment of silence for Doug Coney. For those that don't know, Doug was a longtime resident and involved individual here with the city and of course spouse of Marion Scott. He was a member of the Marmel Volunteer Fire Department for years and the folks over there often known as chief. So please, just a moment of silence. Thank you, you can be seated. Next up, I can't quite see who is watching live on Facebook, but we were contacted by a group of scouts from troop 30 who are all working on their communications merit badge. If y'all are watching on Facebook right now, welcome and keep up the good work. With that, I want to move right on to the retirement of Jack Stowe. And so Jack, if you will join me up here, right quick. I get to embarrass Jack here a little bit. I also have named Jack as the employee of the month for April. Y'all may recall that we were doing some catching up. So before I present you with the plaque, I'll let you hold it, but I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation, which will say a lot more about Jack and his involvement in the city than I can say just off the top of my head. So we have a proclamation naming Jack Stowe as the mayor's employee of the month for April 2020 and declaring September 10th, 2020 to be Jack Stowe Day in the city of Marmel. Whereas Jack Stowe and his wife Linda, who I see in the back, moved to Marmel in 1998. Jack quickly became involved in the community as an active resident by attending community meetings and going door to door to get petitions signed for the change of government back in 2001. Whereas after serving as a resident on the city's annexation committee, Mr. Stowe started his employment with the city of Marmel, working directly with Mayor Birch Johnson in 2002 as special projects manager. Whereas Mr. Stowe has worked directly for three mayors and has worked closely with three city clerks, three city attorneys, and numerous council members and department heads. Whereas Mr. Stowe has quietly left his fingerprints on nearly all aspects of the city since he began his employment. He played an instrumental role in overseeing and assisting in projects such as the soccer fields, the softball fields, Lake Willistine Amphitheater, the transfer station, animal shelter, Public Works Building, the old senior center when it was here in the building, four separate annexation projects, multiple wetland trails and grants, the wetland viewing station, and most recently, the city hall renovation. And whereas Mr. Stowe has served on or as a liaison to numerous boards and committees such as the PACE Board, Metro Plans RPAC Advisory Committee, Green Task Force, and Imagine Central Arkansas, as well as Central Arkansas Planning and Development District CEO Board and North Little Rock Wastewater Utility Board, and much, much more. Now therefore, I, Caleb Norris, Mayor of Marmel, on this eighth day of September 2020, with great honor and privilege, do hereby declare Jack Stowe to be the mayor's employee of the month for April 2020 and hereby proclaim September 10th, 2020 to be Jack Stowe Day in the city of Marmel. Signed, Caleb Norris. Fun fact, Jack's last day will be September 11th, this Friday, though we thought it apt to name a different day than September 11th after Jack Stowe. So with that, I presented him with the proclamation and probably the nicest plaque that any individual has had retiring from the city, so. With that, how about some pictures? Jack, would you like to say something? This is your chance.
Yeah, I'll say a few words. Yeah, the mayor kind of shortened it a little bit. Yes, I have served for three mayors with three city clerks, three city attorneys, and 44 aldermen or councilmen. I've also served at 28 different directors here, four human resource directors, six finance directors, four public works, two fire, three planning and zoning, two police, two parks and rec, two code enforcement, one seniors, and two CEDs. And it's been good working here this long and serving this long. I outlasted everybody in city hall that was here when I first got here except one. Mary Green is still here, I'm going to have to leave her behind. But I appreciate the plaques, appreciate the kind words, and it's been good working with you.
Probably most personally, I think I've gone to Jack with lunch more than I have with anyone ever in my entire life, and I think I'm going to miss those. So I may be bugging you or saving you from retirement for those. With that, I want to move on to a presentation of the North Marmel Small Area Plan. Backing up and as a little bit of perspective, y'all may know, this year in the council meeting, in the budget meeting, hang on, let me make sure I'm still on Zoom. My computer is wigging out. There we go. During this last budget session, the council set aside some funds for, to begin some strategic planning on the small level. One of the issues that we ran into last year was as we were trying to spur economic development in certain areas, that one of the issues we saw at the north end of town was numerous property owners who were wanting to take action, but all going in a whole bunch of different directions. The Chamber of Commerce in the city worked originally early last year and even before that, trying to get everyone on the same page. That was not the most productive process as a result. One of the things we wanted to do is try and put together a plan and bring folks together to see if we can't revitalize that area with sort of a new vision for that place. So in that regard, I tasked Scott Grummer, who I didn't have to task, I think he was determined to do it whether I wanted him to or not. I did, and he's great at it. And one of the things we looked at was bringing in Crafton Toll to do a small area plan. Of course, Crafton Toll and Dave Roberts worked on the city's strategic plan back in 2012, and I think it was approved in 2013. And so we were able to capitalize on some of their experience and knowledge with the city and use that to our advantage here. So without further ado, Scott, looks like you're first.
All righty, and Mr. Mayor, can you switch it over to the...
Well, you won't see it up there.
Okay.
But I can stream, wait a minute, yes, I can. To, are you on HDMI?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Scott Grummer, Director of Planning and Permits for the city. As the mayor mentioned, first off, I want to give thanks to the business owners and the landowners in North Marmel, as well as in the county, to the mayor for giving us the opportunity to do a small area plan, to the Marmel Chamber of Commerce, who was intricately involved in the beginning of this and bringing everyone together, as well as Crafton Toll, our Department of Economic Development, Judy Keller, and everyone else within the city that played a role. So when we first looked at this, we looked at the impact that the Morgan-Marmel area would have, and you'll see that the drive time from five minutes, 10 minutes, and 15 minutes can stretch all the way to Conway as well as into Little Rock. So this is a very important area of the city. And coming together, as the mayor mentioned, there were early visions from some of the landowners up there, and you'll see that we pulled those, they provided those, and as we, everyone came together, there were other areas. So this is the part of the city that the city owns, but you'll also notice that some of this area impacted in the county, as well as multiple landowners, business owners, and the full impact that actually goes both city and the county, which is where the small area plan that we decided to move for, that was mainly in the business district of where North Marmel is. So with that, we have, we came together with those stakeholders in the area and came up with, and did a procurement, and Crafton Toll won the RFQ on that and came in, and I want to introduce Dave Roberts with Crafton Toll, who actually created this design, and he'll go through it and help you out.
Did we lose connection there?
So can I switch? Yeah. You may, you may have to switch it off and then switch it back.
Turn off all the TVs, but okay.
Okay. Sorry, we went from PowerPoint to...
It'll be a few minutes.
Got it.
Well, while we're waiting for that to come up, I'll introduce myself. My name's Dave Roberts. I live at 155 Marseille Drive here in Marmel, and as the mayor mentioned, I worked on the strategic plan years ago, and when this opportunity came, I jumped at it because I live here. I wanted to see the possibilities and work with the landowners to see what could happen up there. And so this master plan that we created is really just a vision to get everyone on the same page, to talk about the possibilities, and we went through a couple of different iterations until we got to what hopefully you're going to see, maybe, the plan here. It worked perfectly in the conference room when we looked at it 15 minutes ago, so.
I see your desktop. Do you have it set so that you have to slide it over?
I have to slide it over where to?
Do you have two screens?
I do have two screens.
It's probably on the other screen.
Okay.
If you have Windows P and just duplicate, that'll work usually.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Scott. Okay, so the smaller image on the right is what we're just calling inspirational images. If we look at the plan on the left, that small image is over the interchange. So you enter in from the east coming down Highway 365. We included a roundabout as one of the primary entrances into this area, so that'd be pretty much halfway between the interchange of I-40 and Highway 100, where the light is. Right about in the middle would be that roundabout. And fortunately, our firm has done a lot of roundabouts for RDOT, that's an RDOT road, so I brought our engineers in to help me, excuse me, help me do a RDOT-approved roundabout. So that's what you're seeing there. And so what we wanted to have is an entertainment district that would function around that existing lake, which is the lake that's behind Lake Liquor, giving it its name, and try to wrap that lake with city amenities, like the amphitheater and some walking trails, as well as commercial retail entities that could generate some tax revenue for the city. So you see the blue there, that's the existing lake. The L-shaped building around it could be anything from restaurants to retail. The owner of Lake Liquor mentioned maybe he would, he'd like to do a microbrew or something in that area, so that's what that one-story building with a boardwalk on the back would be. The parking for it is really just on the front along that main drive coming in. But you'll see, we still maintain Frontier Road, which is over on the far right. That road's existing, it goes right next to the subway and the pizza and runs to the north. And then what we located up along the interstate right away, again, these are just ideas, this is a vision, it's potential, would be something like the movie theater where you can dine in, like they have down in, down south in, I'm drawing a blank, I'm sorry, where the Bass Pro Shops is, you know, down, down south. And so you'd have a dine-in theater with supporting apartments, and I know apartments aren't always a great word, but what we're looking for is something that could transition between the single family that's on the far left of the plan that you see in the aerial and the development. And what we wanted to make was a walkable community, not to be, there's still driving access to it and plenty of parking, but we wanted to be able to have folks from the neighborhood as well as some of the multifamily to be able to walk to not only the entertainment, the restaurants, the theater, but then have access also off of the interstate. And what you see along, right near the roundabout...
This meeting is being recorded.
Right along the roundabout there on the south side of the plan, just off that would be some commercial out parcels, as well as some mixed use that runs up vertically. So let me show you some of these pictures. So you see the one there on the right, that's an image of what that boardwalk could be. I found this down in Texas, it sort of fit how that would look and feel with some of those shops. Here's another shot of it. We had already done the drawings when I found these images, so it was a perfect fit with the vision. And then this could be something at night with the entertainment aspect of it. And then this is that movie tavern like they have down in, down by Otter Creek, and that would be up along the north side. And then this is a good example of what might be on that center spine that takes you from the one roundabout to the middle roundabout, and that's there on the left. Mixed use that might have retail on the bottom floor, could have offices above, could have dining, as you see next to the building, you'd have those two, and they're supported by the parking that's behind it. So again, everything's more pedestrian-oriented along the road, and then the two different types of apartment complexes. These are local ones I used as an example. I just went on Google Earth, I found some that would be appropriate size and density for this area, and then pulled those images in and placed them and kind of manipulated them a little bit to fit in this plan, just so you could see the density, the footprints of how those would work. And what you see on the very top left, Rocky Havens owns that land up there, currently it's automotive parts and storage, that could be something as simple as storage units. It's a strange shape of a property, so there weren't a lot of options what would fit there. But as Scott mentioned, we worked closely with the landowners, so each one of these had a say, and then we'd say, what do you think about this use, or what do you think about, you know, the location of some of these elements? And I'd say most of them, if not all of them, said, let's make it happen. So I think they were all very, they were integrated into the process, they gave some verbal approval afterwards when we presented it, and the feedback was great. And I think also what it's going to do for the city is present some outdoor use possibilities. I mean, think of it more as a park, you've got the amphitheater and the trails in that area. So there's a lot of potential for this, and I think, I don't know if Scott showed that one slide, but what we typically do after we do a vision master plan like this is use this as a tool to find grant money. Now, it just depends on the grant cycle, what grants are available, from what level, whether it's federal, state, regional, but to be able to, you have to have a master plan in order to go after the next steps. So what's nice is to have something like this allows you to get grants. When Scott was a planner up in Conway, I had worked on two different renderings of projects similar to this that he then took afterwards and secured quite a few grants that allowed them to move the ball forward beyond initial vision. So I think that was the goal here, is that we would get everyone together, find this vision, and then allow it to be a vehicle to get some money coming down the pipe. Now, we have not met with the county or the highway department because you all need to see it first before it goes beyond. Anything else, Scott?
So again, some of you may wonder what the next steps are, and so the next step is getting back together with the stakeholders who are involved with the city and look at strategies, what's the low-hanging fruit, what do we want to identify as the catalyst for change in the area? And that's what we did in Conway, as David mentioned. We found that there was public space that we wanted to center around a park space, and we utilized that as a grant initiative to get design grants.
This meeting is being recorded.
Thank you. And get brownfield cleanup grants, we got over $2.3 million in road improvement grants on a state highway where this was positioned on, as well as other things. So I think in all, we had over, over $3.5 million, that was before the match from the city. So again, what we have to do is look at what we have to identify, and then we'll create strategies and discuss what may be it. So you'll find that on this, from a planning perspective, road alignments, how traffic can ingress and egress out of the area as it builds out is important, because that is a very difficult area to maneuver from a vehicle standpoint, as well as uses, and again, just visions. The business owners are the ones who, or the landowners will be the ones to make the final decisions on what develops up there, but everybody is on board with this, and it's really exciting to see it all come together. Thank you.
Thank you. This is just being presented to the council as an FYI, was there any questions, comments, or discussion items? Whoever's mic is on Marion.
Did I, did I miss, how much of this is already annexed into the city, or is there some annexation to be done? I'm sorry if I missed that overlay.
So part of this was not really in discussion of annexation yet. We wanted to get everybody together because that's kind of a sensitive detail of most. So that will certainly be conversations that we'll have to have next. But as far as the area that is, there's, I can show that, but it's not...
We have moved on from your...
Yes, yeah, so anyway, but...
If that's okay, mostly what I was asking is just, is a portion of it still needing to be annexed if we're going to take it?
Yes, if the city is to invest in those areas, again, we've got to determine what those, what those investments are from a strategy standpoint.
You mentioned the water and sewer, and that this allows us to do this contribution.
Right, so, and again, as far as the various uses, we can go to North Little Rock wastewater, Central Arkansas water, do the calculations for potential sewage usage, water capacity, all that, and then we can start planning for what may be needed infrastructure-wise. So those are other things that we would look at from a public improvement standpoint.
Councilmember Holt? I just wondered, do we have any printout or copies or brochures, any material of this that we can have for our own observation?
We can, I can make you prints, printouts, yes, sir.
I would like that very much.
Okay, I'll have that for you for after the meeting.
Councilmember Gardner?
Scott or Dave, either, either one, what's your experience when it comes to next steps? What helps move the ball forward? Does, does grant money typically follow an investment from a city's perspective, whereas if we were to commit, I know one of the things on our agenda for tonight is a 20% match to try to get an 80% grant for roads. Does that help push the ball forward if we have dollars that we have committed as a city that makes the grants look more attractive so that we win them, or what are your thoughts there? Yeah, I'm just trying to think of what, what needs to be done to help move this forward and get all the stakeholders on board so that we're doing something.
So in my experience, you have to create a narrative for the area that, that those who are providing grants can buy into to show that you actually have a strategy in place. So you kind of create more of a storyline narrative of what the vision is. We've started that with this, but the next step is going to be determining what's the priority of investment that we see as being the catalyst. We have to identify those things. Once we identify them, then we're creating that narrative, and then it also, it kind of, it leads the way to what grant you want to go after. It may not necessarily be a road grant, it may be a public improvement grant for parks and rec, or something that, that, like the brownfield grant we did in Conway, it was just $200,000, but it created, it created the effect of cleaning up an area, turn it into park space for other use, and then that brought the buy-in for surrounding landowners to say, this is changing, we can buy into this, and you kind of get an energy from there. So creating the narrative is the next step.
I don't have any additional lights on here, so thank y'all. While I have a minute, councilmember Mosley, councilmember Saunders, can you hear me? I got a text from councilmember Mosley saying you can't hear me. Councilmember Saunders, are you able to hear? Okay, well, we're down two. So the next order of business then is the approval of the... Y'all have had a copy of that in your council packet, I'd entertain a motion to accept. I've got a motion and a second to accept, is there any discussion on that matter?
I need to correct one thing that councilmember Mosley brought to my attention, and I'll discuss it more at the end, but where I believe in the section where it discussed smoking in park areas, it stated that I said smoking wasn't allowed on walkways. I just quoted 46-1 under a section for walkways, but there is another section that's applicable, and I'll discuss that during city attorney comments.
So I'd entertain a motion to amend?
I didn't understand the amendment. So it just mentioned that I said walkways on the section that it discusses where we talked about the smoking in parks.
Public comment, page three?
Yes. It says, "From any sporting events, splash pad or within 10 feet of playgrounds, trails, and walkways." I believe that's actually...
It should be within 20 yards of...
If y'all could, if y'all could speak into the mic so it picks it up. It's even more difficult with our masks on, I understand.
The language is from 46-1, under A, or within 20 yards of a splash pad or stationary playground equipment in any public park within the city.
All right, I have a motion to approve with the amendment, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Next up is public comment, the only public comment card I have is on an agenda item, so we will read that.
The only public comment card I have is on an agenda item, so we will read that at that time. We will move on to department reports. And this week, we are honored to hear from Mike Hogan, Director of Public Works, Sanitation, and Street Department. Mr. Hogan, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers. Good evening, everyone. Mike Hogan, Public Works Director, 600 Cogdell Drive. Got a few things to report with different departments, so I'm going to start out with sanitation. Sanitation has been slammed lately, I think, due to the COVID-19. There's an increase in recycling, trash pickup, special pickups. I think that's due to an increase of people staying at home that has brought this home, brought this on due to special, or projects around their house, cleaning out their garages and everything else. So it's going to be interesting to see the tonnage numbers this year versus last year. I haven't got them yet, but when I get those, might be interesting to see and I will let y'all know. Sanitation has definitely been busy and I would like to thank all of our employees for sure for hanging in there and sometimes having to pull from other departments to make things happen due to people on vacation and stuff. That's about all I've got for sanitation. If anybody's got any questions, if not, I'll move on to street department.
Go for it.
Okay. With having another wet year this year, Street Department has dealt with a number of drainage issues and around the city. We do a lot of slip lines, culvert rehabilitation. We've done one on Iris Cove and have the pipe on hand that we just got the other day to do Cattail Cove and are in the progress, are in the process of ordering two more slip line pipes, one for Waterside and one for 26 Spring Drive. I will say Iris Cove, Cattail, and Waterside, we've been having trouble there for years. The soil is acidic-y, a lot of rustation in the pipe, and this slip line has been working very well. The more we do, the more our crew becomes used to it and finds better ways and has been really working well. I would also like to mention through RDOT, we have gotten a grant to do asphalt overlays and striping on North Odom. I'm sure some of y'all have noticed that. And Cranford Asphalt, we're the low bidder for that project and it looks like they're doing a good job. So hopefully they'll finish up with that. I, I think they're finished with asphalt. Hopefully they'll get the striping done soon. Also, path improvements are underway by Redstone Construction over behind Club Manor. It's about midways down Club Manor, not quite to Trevino, but coming back towards South Odom. And will go all the way to South Odom near the senior services. So there's a total of 1,925 feet of walkpaths that will be overlaid. And also Redstone Construction will hopefully be starting the 2020 street overlays. One of those streets will be Stone Ledge Drive, be 1,090 feet. Millstone Cove, 775 feet. Rock Ledge Place would be 325 feet. And this is an extension of what we've done in the past at Stone Ledge because we're trying to follow around where CAW has done water relocations and messed up the streets. So hopefully this will catch that area up. Also, Arnold Palmer will be finished out from where we left off last year. I don't have the footage on that, but hopefully it'll make it to the Boulevard. And striping will be done on that as well. So if there's anything for the Street Department that y'all have questions about, or I can move on to, to grounds maintenance.
We can get the questions at the end.
Okay. Grounds maintenance, due to another wet season, we've been trying to keep up with demand as far as the mowing and weed eating. We caught up for a brief moment until, what is it, Hurricane Laura reached Landfall. So we're playing catch-up again. So we have done some outsourcing on mowing. We have outsourced to do senior wellness center, police department, and both fire departments. And that's helped us catch up quite a bit to keep up with green spaces, right of ways, and, and the parks. So hopefully we won't have any rain for a little while. And building maintenance, they just do what they do. Fleet maintenance, they're small departments, but I'd like to thank them for everything they do to keep our equipment running, especially sanitation trucks. Sometimes it's a challenge keeping mowers and sanitation and all the other departments going. And last but not least, animal services. And that's all I've got. Anybody's got any questions?
Thank you. Councilmember Vapurzain?
When we have to outsource, how do, how do we pay for that? What funds do we use to cover that?
We have paid for it out of Public Works General. We took bids on it and got one real good bid that come in low enough to where we could budget that. And this is just kind of a trial run to see if this will really help out. This is the second time that they have done that and, and it has helped. It cuts out about a day and a half of mowing that we can mow elsewhere.
Okay. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much. That's the last of the councilmember comments. While I have you, Councilmember Saunders or Councilmember Mosley? I heard you there a moment ago. Mosley. I can hear you. You can't hear me. Okay. So here in a minute, I'm going to try and rejoin that call. In case you hear phone numbers. The beauty of technology. Anyways, next up is the Planning Commission Report. And that was Councilmember Holt this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will point out on the beginning that the subcommittee meeting lasted for two hours and the actual meeting itself on the 27th lasted an hour and 45 minutes. So I am well schooled at this point. And if that is an omen for our new director, I, the other alderman may want to get ready for it. It was an interesting event, to say the least. Most of it was very routine. We had an application for pursuit of excellent school on Club Manor. It passed without opposition, so that will be done. The, one of the main issues was the Mammel splash pad. That took on quite a, a in-depth conversation. We'll get to that. I'll leave that to Madam City Attorney. She will want to. It had to do with parking and the laws and all that kind of stuff, so I'll bypass that. The Lily Oaks condition, an application for an engineering project at Lily Oaks, and it was approved. Country Club Parkway, fence height variance, and that was denied. The other main item was for the town hall or the town community center where we will have a splash, splash car wash and a splash lube control in the old neighborhood grocery store. Fairly routine. It just was so many items involved, it took quite a while. So that's why the entire meeting lasted the way it did. But it was a very productive meeting. Five members were present and everything went very smoothly. So looking forward to the next one. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So the next order of business is a procedural motion. I'd entertain a motion to have all ordinances and resolutions read by title only. I had a motion from Councilmember Vapurzain, a second from Councilmember Gardner. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, please speak into your mic. And all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Moving on to unfinished business, the first item is the third reading of Ordinance 1014, amending section 82 dash seven of the Mammel City Code. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only.
Be it enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammel, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 1014 and ordinance amending section 82 dash seven of the Mammel City Code to clarify the vehicles prohibited from parking on the streets and for other purposes.
Outstanding. Is there any council discussion? Councilmember Gardner?
Motion to approve ordinance number 1014.
We've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in, Madam City Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Councilmember Vapurzain?
Yes.
Councilmember Tierney?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
Councilmember Saunders?
I don't think he can.
Councilmember Saunders?
I don't think they can hear us.
Councilmember Mosley?
Motion carries. Ordinance 1014 is approved. The next item of business is the second reading of Ordinance 991, adopting provisions for sick leave. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mammel, Plaski County, Arkansas, ordinance number 991, and ordinance of the City of Mammel, Arkansas, adopting provisions for the police, the police officer sick leave accrual, adopting provisions for payment of the accrued sick leave time at death or retirement and for other purposes.
Outstanding. This is on second reading. It'll be on third reading at the next city council meeting. If there's not any discussion. Seeing none, we'll move on to new business. Item A is Resolution 2020 dash 21, granting conditional use permit. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammel, Plaski County, Arkansas, resolution number 2020 dash 21, a resolution granting a conditional use permit to locate a child daycare center in a C2 Village Center commercial zoning district.
Outstanding. This is for a daycare unit that Councilmember Holt discussed. If there's no discussion on this, Councilmember Vapurzain? So I've got a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2020 dash 21. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please speak into your mic, and say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. I got no votes from Councilmember Saunders or Councilmember Mosley. Thank you all for coming out and we look forward to having you guys as a member of our community. Thank you. The next order of business is Resolution 2020 dash 22, granting a conditional use permit. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammel, Plaski County, Arkansas, resolution number 2020 dash 22, a resolution granting a conditional use permit to locate splash pad facilities in an open space zoning district.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I do have a public comment card on this from Mr. Craig Johnson. Mr. Johnson, if you could please come to the microphone, state your name and address, and the floor is yours for an entire three minutes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it, councilmembers and Madam Clerk, Mayor, and Madam City Attorney. Craig Johnson, 3 Sierra Valley, Kovan, Mammel. I'm actually before you as a planning commissioner, not on a personal agenda today, but I went ahead and filled out the comment card. I'm sure the mayor would, provided me the opportunity to speak, but I was just playing by the rules. So I think that it's very unusual for us to have a do not pass recommendation for you tonight. And in fact, I've been a commissioner for 14 years, I think, or so. I was on ASMAIC when I came up, I think since 2006. And I, I can't think of ever one. And there's been very few do not passes. So I thought a little bit of explanation on, on some of the position and some that Alderman Holt actually brought forward too as well. So the splash pad was coming. Actually, we reviewed it for two months. First month it was tabled and the second month it was brought back. And it's an open space. You guys know, should know where it's at, it's down by the tennis courts. And it's, it's a, it's not, we don't have a designated use for a splash pad, which, which puts the planning commission a little bit in a quandary about how do we handle this? And I think staff struggled with that a little bit too as well. So we didn't have a designated use. We are in open space and the biggest concern was really parking because we had a consultant's information at the time. And I did read through the packet and I did see the email that, you know, we need about 31 spots, of which we had 11 on the street. We really don't have street use designated parking. And so a lot of the commissioners said, you know, let's, let's approach the charter school about some type of cross parking agreement. I did see in the packet where they did say that there was an email. I have not seen the email, but I was looking for something that had a little bit more teeth in it as, as a true agreement. I've got, said, well, he's a verbal agreement and, you know, I don't, I don't really accept that, for instance. And I don't know about my fellow commissioners. So that was not successful in being able to come with it as, as, as the packet was presented to, to commission. So as such, there were some commissioners that had continued concerns about that, as well as some other, other items. And there was a do not pass recommendation that moved forward and on to you. There is parking planned on the site. It is for a subsequent phase. I don't really know the timing of that and staff didn't indicate it to us either. So I, I just think that, of course, you're going to have the latitude to move it forward. And the only thing that, that I would like to give you just to think on is that I think we have to be very careful as a community, as a city, moving things forward that could be construed gray. I, we, I think we strive very hard at the commission level to make sure that we are very consistent. And I wouldn't want, we don't want to treat anybody different when it comes before the commission. So anybody that comes through the door has an application, we like to treat them uniform and fairly. It doesn't matter who they are, ethnicity, race, color, or even what their stature is with the city. And so here in this case, you are the applicant. So we have to be careful about, you know, any perceived self-interest that you may have moving forward. And I know there's grant money involved. So, you know, with that, that's, that's really my only comments that I have for you. I'm happy to entertain any questions. There's other members here as well as on the commission, so, which is good to see when we potentially have a, an issue that was contentious on our level and it's, it's passed on to you guys. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Is there any discussion at this time? Councilmember Vapurzain?
So this is just a parking issue? Is that what I'm understanding?
So this is a conditional use that allow the city to put the splash pad.
Right.
At the location.
But it received the do not pass because of parking?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay.
And so there is, just so that I. How about I turn on my mic? Just so that I could chime in, yes, it's my understanding it was a parking was the primary issue. There's no, currently no onsite parking at that location. And so the idea was that there'd be street parking with an agreement with the charter school to allow their overflow, to allow folks to park in their area. Academics Plus has given their verbal agreement that they can, that we can use that. But Mr. McGill has said anything above a verbal agreement would have to go to a board. I spoke with Mr. McGill today, who's the CEO, superintendent of charter, as a lot of us know. And he said that, that his issue is we primarily already operate with verbal agreements with them with regards to many different things, including the parking lot out here, of which half is now owned by them and half by the city. We park city vehicles in there overnight pretty regularly. And then he pointed out that with, with things such as the soccer complex or the softball fields or baseball fields, we only have a verbal agreement there. So he said he might be willing to take it to the board to get some sort of written agreement. And what they'd want in exchange is some sort of written agreement from us on their ability to use some of the facilities. Now, that, that was just he and I talking together. But to answer your question.
Is there onsite parking for the tennis? Is there onsite parking for the tennis courts?
Pardon me?
Is there onsite parking for the tennis courts?
No. They use the same parking area, basically. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I think everybody knows I've put a lot of time and energy into helping raise funds for this. So I'm obviously, you know, on the side of getting the splash pad completed here. One of the things that our city has worked hard on is its walkability. I know we had a big grant project to put sidewalks in all throughout this area. And we've got some condos, apartments, a lot of walkability in this area. And so the reason that I put that email in the packet after talking with Mr. Roberts and I'd asked Mr. Roberts to stay for this portion as well, because he and Crafton Toll designed the site plan piece. And so I thought it would be good for us to hear from a planning perspective why the parking is the way it is. And so Dave, feel free to come on up, but there is on-street parking that was designated. I believe fifteen spots that would be there. And so I would, I would just like to hear his perspective on the design and that. And also a question for the city attorney at the end. So go ahead, Dave.
Okay, yes, thank you.
Hang on, let me walk this around. I didn't. Okay.
All right. The eleven parking spaces that were mentioned with the planning commission report reflect what's on the plan. That's from the corner closest to the school along the pad parking, the site. Those parallel spots that aren't shown extend beyond the tennis courts all the way over here to City Hall. So there's about fifteen spaces. They counted the ones that were on the plan. The plan was just showing the immediate area. So there's a run of about fifteen. The other thing to think about is the distance that you would typically walk to something like this. The problem is that if you look on national standards for parks and rec, there's nothing for parking on splash pads. There is for a swimming pool. There is for tennis courts, golf courses, everything. But for some reason, there's not anything yet on splash pads. So the splash pad company that we worked with gave us some numbers to think about. And he said thirty-one was that max. But what he said is on the actual wet surface where families would be using the actual splash pad, it's eighteen families. Thirty-one would include all the grass area around that within the fence line. I think most people go to splash pad are going to want to be on the splash pad. So that thirty-one is a little deceiving of a number because eighteen families is probably what is going to be using it unless they're sitting maybe under an umbrella. So I think the other problem is the fact that we're looking at thirty-one cars. That could be thirty-one cars for your new Burger King. That could be thirty-one cars for a bank. That's, that's a commercial number. We're not trying to generate revenue here. We have a public space to allow families to come and use this. We don't have a guideline so that, so by plugging in a commercial number for that, for the cars is a little unrealistic because we're looking at open space like we have at Willistee, like we have even at this park. And if I were to make another argument, it's just the fact that you've got excess parking even around City Hall that is in a close proximity. I think if you get out of your car at Walmart and you walk to the front door, you're probably walking twice as far as what you would from City Hall parking to the splash pad. And so when you, when you think realistically about distances and walkability, I don't think parking should be our biggest concern here. I don't think we have a parking problem. I think in some towns that I do master plans for, we have a walking problem because we don't, we want to park right in front and go right in to whatever the use is. And in this case, I think if you build a splash pad on your city land, I think people are going to be willing to come from all over to use it. And if that means they have to walk a block or a half a block, I think they're going to, they're going to do that. So I would urge you to consider passing it, even if that thirty-one number seems a little, little odd. You subtract the fifteen that's already in front of that and then you look at the verbal agreement. I think you're going to be just fine. You're only looking at probably ten spaces that you're short. Thank you.
For our city attorney, I know the planning commission was looking at this from, you know, the guidelines that they look at for other commercial style developments. In our city code, it's my understanding, and I'll set you explain this. Are there any requirements for parking spots for an open space like this?
So there's no, there's a schedule of parking requirements in our code. But there is no use for a park, a public park or a playground that's defined there. You know, this is a spot, a space that had a playground on it at one time. That equipment has been removed, but it's the same type of use. I will note, you know, there are a lot, we have a lot of little pocket parks that exist, you know, along the walking trails and neighborhoods. I noticed that in the North Mammell design, there's, you know, a park area there and there's no parking. So if this is going to become an issue, we'll need, they'll need to address that. So, you know, there are attorney general opinions that address this as well in terms of a public use. A public use is distinguishable from a commercial use. Our code does discuss recreational facilities and specifically says as it applies to commercial use and gives the parking requirements for that. So when it's a public use, it's more of a balancing of the interest tests on whether you apply the same, you know, the zoning provisions in a local code. Because again, just what he said, it's the public using it. We're not raising revenue from it. It's not making anybody any money. So there is not a scheduled use in the code for that.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I look that we approve.
I had a motion from Councilmember Scott and a second from Councilmember Williams to approve this resolution. Resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-two. Is there any further discussion on that issue? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
And I don't think any mics went on. All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Just a reminder, please speak into the microphone. If you give me a minute, I'm going to go ahead and try and call back into Zoom. If this, if there wasn't a ton of stuff going on, it gets even more increasing when you're texting councilmembers trying to hear the meeting. So please bear with me for a moment.
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID followed by pound. You entered eight, seven, zero, one, seven, eight, zero, two, nine, six. This meeting ID does not exist. Please re-enter your meeting ID followed by pound.
Okay. Well, it's just as well. Just as well. I tried. Okay. So the next order of business is the first reading of ordinance ten sixteen regarding catastrophic leave. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mammell, Plaski County, Arkansas, ordinance number ten sixteen, and ordinance of the City of Mammell, Arkansas, adopting provisions for the program of compliance with the Arkansas Uniform Catastrophic Leave Program.
Thank you. All right. We had discussed a catastrophic leave bank at some time back. There was one to one with the city, at least on paper somewhere. And this was brought up when we were discussing the sick leave for the police officers. So with that, if there's any discussion, great. Councilmember Gardner?
I think you may just answer that. My question was, will this apply to our uniformed officers as well? Any, any employee of the city, including uniformed personnel?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there any additional discussion? If not, it'll be on second reading at the next city council meeting.
I'm sorry, it is only a full-time employee that's been employed a certain number of years and that. So there are some, some designations there.
Outstanding. So the next item is resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-three. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, Plaski County, Arkansas, resolution number twenty twenty dash twenty-three, a resolution expressing the willingness of the City of Mammell, Arkansas to utilize federal aid transportation program funds related to the Central Arkansas Regional Transportation Study Area, Surface Transportation Program and Highway Infrastructure Program.
Thank you. So this is regarding the roundabout that we've discussed and the council's asked us to move forward on connecting White Oak Crossing, Counts Massey and Country Club Parkway. As you all know, engineers have been designing this. One of the goals is to get a grant from Metro Plan. We do have a representative of the engineering firm. If you all have any questions. So Far North of Rock's chugging away with us and trying to do a joint grant application. We've received word that our grant application can be processed, I think is the best way to describe that. But with that, this resolution is necessary for us to even complete the application. North of Rock is running their own companion resolution to this one as we jointly come together and apply for grant in this area. Councilmember Vapurzhan?
I have a couple of questions for the engineer.
Outstanding. We have Mr. Mike Watson. You may look a little bit familiar. Go ahead.
Mike Watson for Blue Spring Cove. I'm not an engineer, but I work for an engineering firm, so.
Any initial estimates on the cost?
A pretty detailed estimate, not initial really. It's pretty detailed. We've got the plans at ninety percent completed. It's one million, four hundred and three thousand dollars right now. That's what it's at. Now, that does not include any land purchases that would be required or any utility relocations that would be required. That's the construction cost of the roundabout itself.
So that would put us in the two hundred and eighty thousand dollar range for the construction cost?
That's what the twenty percent would be and you're sharing that with North of Rock. Based on an area calculation, Mammell has about seventy-five percent of the roundabout. North of Rock has about twenty-five percent of it. So it'd be split that way also. So you would not be paying the full two eighty. It'd be two ten is what it would be.
What's a timeframe on the, on the building construction aspect?
Well, first off, you need to get the grant. But the grants are due September thirtieth. I think Metro Plan will move forward by December with awarding the grants. I think they're going to try to get these awarded by the end of the year and board action would have to take place at the Metro Plan Board. And I think that would occur in December. The other caveat then is these plans, we've got them at ninety percent, but they're going to have to go to the highway department to get reviewed. I will not give you a time on when that would occur, but it's taken two to three months to get things back because of COVID. Most of the highway department's working off-site right now. And so we will have to do that, but I think you could go to construction mid-year next year if everything aligns up perfectly like that. And the goal is to have the money spent or at least allocated by September of next year. So they've got to move these projects forward through Metro Plan. And there's, I think there's fifteen projects that have applied for this pot of money out there throughout the region, four county region.
Thank you very much.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns, discussion? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to.
Motion to approve resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-three.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion to approve? Seeing none. All those in favor, please speak into your microphone and say yes.
Yes.
Perfect. All opposed, say no. Motion carries. It was nice seeing all the lights light up. Thank you, Mayor Watson, for coming out and missing all the fun. Or being reminded of all the fun you're missing is probably more appropriate. The next order of business is resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-four. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled resolution number twenty twenty dash twenty-four, a resolution to amend the twenty twenty COVID nineteen relief fund budget.
Outstanding. Rather than have me discuss this, we have someone who's proving to be an invaluable resource when it comes to the city's finance. Ms. Mathis, please come tell us what we're doing.
Well, I'm convinced y'all are going to get sick of hearing from me since I've been up here almost every week since I started. But we've obviously been working on digging into the city's finances. And really, what I've included in your packet this week is a brief description of fund structures and how they're designed to be used. And I made that little chart for you, which they're getting up on the screen, that kind of gives you an idea of what the city's fund structure looks like. This is a chart that we'll begin to use each year in the budget as we are really looking at our planning and understanding it. There's three different main types of funds, governmental funds, proprietary funds and fiduciary funds. Those are your three little blue squares. What we deal with the most is our governmental funds. Obviously, the primary one is always the general fund. The general fund has everything that doesn't belong in another fund in it. We've got our capital project funds and debt service funds, which have been, are really tied together. Those two particular ones are. You guys, through ordinance nine eighty, last year created that capital improvement fund. And then the other category of governmental funds is what are called special revenue funds. We have a few, the street funds, which is per Arkansas law. Arkansas statute requires us to keep those street funds separated. You guys created through an ordinance, the police and fire fund. And there's also a district court automation fund, which is required by several state statutes. There will be some more special revenue funds that we're going to be asking, or we'll be working to set up. And it's really just our accounting structure. These aren't necessarily always separate bank accounts. Sometimes the law does require a separate bank account that ties to some of these funds, but this really is just a way of accounting a little bit differently and pulling these things out into their own separate little bucket so that you can keep up with any funds that are designated to be spent in a specific area. So we have several other ones that as we move into the twenty twenty-one budget process, we're going to start breaking some other ones out of the general fund. But this evening, we have two in particular, this resolution that's before you now and the one immediately following it. With the COVID nineteen relief funds, we've got eligible for funds through FEMA. We've got CARES Act funding that the state is going to be rolling out that grant process in the next two weeks. And then there was additional CARES Act funding that came through FEMA, through DHS, which is the money in this resolution that you're looking at tonight, that's fifty thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, or two hundred and fifty dollars. They sent us this money. It is specifically to pay out additional pay to EMTs. So what we're doing is we've set up the fund. This is a budget amendment, which puts the revenue and the expense appropriation in for approval in that fund, which allows us to then pay all those EMTs, those additional funds. What we're going to do though is any money grant funds that come in related to COVID nineteen relief, we're going to record those as receipts in this fund and move any expenses that we're applying for reimbursement. A lot of those, we, out of necessity, we've already done some this year that have hit our general fund. We'll reclass those expenses into this fund and apply for reimbursement for them. Because of the levels between some other grants and stuff that we have, we may be over the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar threshold that would require a single book audit because we've received that much in federal funds in a year. So moving these things into their own funds helps us account for it better to ensure that we're compliant with all of those funding sources and can keep track of all of that stuff a little bit separately and not have it commingled in our general fund revenues and expenses. And that's really the idea of both of these. The other one that's coming before you is that large FEMA grant that was budgeted in the general fund in twenty twenty. We're asking you to reallocate that budget to its own fund, basically move it over. And especially since it's a multi-year project and over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal funding, this is just going to allow us to track it better. And it also provides a little bit more transparency on funding sources and how they're being spent. So there's lots more on the inserts on the, in your packet. spent. So there's lots more on the inserts on the, in your packet that you can read through, and I'm happy to answer any questions, but that was kind of the quick overview.
Yes, thank you. Go ahead and, uh, councilmembers, keep the, the stuff that's in the council packet and, and keep that, the descriptions of the funds and what they are. That'll come in handy come budget time and just something for y'all's, um, knowledge. Councilmember Vapurzane?
I think it's very wise to do this with both of these, and I make motion to approve Resolution 2020 dash twenty-four.
Outstanding. We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2020 dash twenty-four. Any additional discussion on that issue? Discussion on anything that was presented by Ms. Mathis? Okay. All those in favor, please speak into your microphone and say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries, six to two. Outstanding. So the next order of business then is the reading of Resolution 2020 dash twenty-five, amending the 2020 general fund budget. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled Resolution Number 2020 dash twenty-five, a resolution to amend the 2020 general fund and FEMA FMAT grant fund budget.
Outstanding. Is there any discussion on this resolution?
Motion to approve Resolution 2020 dash twenty-five.
Second.
We had a motion to approve Resolution 2020 dash twenty-five from Councilmember Vapurzane that has been seconded. Is there any discussion, question, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, uh, all those in favor, please speak into your mic and say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. All right. That concludes new business today. I just wanted to update y'all on as far as the COVID-19 is impacting us. We have had employees test positive. There does not appear to be a, a widespread breakout. In fact, we're, we're already getting some folks back from their, their time quarantining. We're not seeing numerous people in one department, which is good. It demonstrates that the employees are doing a pretty good job, either wearing facial coverings or not, or social distancing. It's, it's been a very small count relatively. Other than that, there's not a whole lot changing. There's no new stuff from the city's perspective. We're just chugging along and trying to be as safe as possible. Y'all may have noticed, we've got furniture in now for City Hall. There's still a few pieces coming along. The renovations are really wrapping up. We have a lot more signage coming in to let people know what the different areas and pods are and what parts belong to the state of Arkansas or being used by them and what parts are being used by us. We recently opened up, now that we've got the furniture in here and that that door is no longer propped open most of the day as it has been with contractors coming and going, we have allowed those folks that were waiting for the revenue office to come in here. That is, is, it gets folks off their feet and, and out of the weather, but it is becoming a logistical headache, especially considering there are other revenue offices in the area that are closed down for sanitizing the area. And we think, my assumption is maybe some employees have tested positive or they've had some folks there. That has caused more people to come to the Mammell Revenue Office than typically come to the Mammell Revenue Office. Combine that with things like we're seeing today, which is their statewide network went out. We are seeing waits of hours to get in to the revenue office. For anyone in here or those watching at home, please consider coming in the middle of the month. It tends to be better. Beginning and end of the month with the revenue office is always the busiest, and if it can wait for a little while, I recommend it that you wait and hope some of these other offices open up. With that, the Crystal Hill project, we, after doing some value engineering, we gave a notice of award. The contractor is getting the, the bonds. We anticipate a contract coming here pretty quick and then a notice to proceed following that. And so we anticipate that being under construction here fairly soon. When it does, when we, when we have a little bit better of a date, we'll have a, unless the council objects, a socially distanced groundbreaking at the location. Just to spread word, this is a project that's been lingering for a long time, and we wanna let folks know that we're finally working on it. It'll also come with some major, uh, there, there will not be through traffic at some portions along this road. It is not simply an overlay. It is ripping out the base and basically building a new road. But we'll do what we can to keep cars moving. But it'll be a big deal for anyone that's used to using that. I think that concludes everything I had to say for Mayor's comments. I'll remember something later. So are there any councilmember comments? Councilmember Vapurzane?
I was here this morning prior, prior to eight o'clock, and by the time the revenue office opened, there was ten to twelve people in line. And I just want to commend Kristy up front for the job that she's doing because it's fallen upon her to take care of all these people and try and make sure they're not out in the heat. She's bringing them in here, trying to space them out, taking numbers, but as well as her regular duties, she's taking care of the revenue office as well. And I was very, very impressed with how she handled things this morning. I just wanted to give a shout out to her. The adaptive traffic, traffic signal system is...
Is chugging along. Really quick, let me, let me back up. Kristy is the one that handles most of that, but there's every day when she goes to lunch, we've got other members of the finance department usually coming to help out. And, uh, some, they've been chugging along awfully well for something that is not at all in the normal scope of what they ever thought they'd be doing, or it's, it's, it's a different ballgame, but we're, we're doing what we can do. The adaptive traffic signal system is coming along. It's being installed. I don't know if we have an estimated completion date. Even if we did, I don't know that I'd say it because nothing, that, that, that project just could come along. Mayor Watson once told me that if he knew it was gonna be this much of a headache, he might not have proceeded with it. But, so, thank you. Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to thank Ms. Mathis for all the work that she's done starting out. The, the transparency that you've been able to help provide with the funds is gonna be extremely beneficial going forward, especially, I, I know that the FEMA grant, that's a very large dollar number, and it's very difficult to look at our budget and wonder where we are when we know that revenue's not coming in and nor are the expenses going out. And so I look forward to seeing, I guess, the revised financials whenever we get that taken out. So thank you for all the work you've done on that. And then also thank y'all to the council for supporting the splash pad. This has been a long time coming, and I have no doubts, this is gonna be a tremendous asset for our city. Director Rayburn left already, but I was talking to him last week, and I think he said it's been about fifteen years since we've added a park. I think 2005 was his last recollection of when we added any playground equipment. Not to say we haven't repaired stuff along the way, but fifteen years, that's a long time. And so I'm really excited for this to take off next year and see where it goes. So thank y'all.
I want to echo something about working with Ms. Mathis. I often, she'll come in with some crazy sounding idea, and I'll ask a thousand questions, and she'll have the right answers for all of them. And all the way down to me asking, well, what have you talked to legislative audit about this? What is that? What have they said? And she'll come back and say, yes, I spoke to these people that, you know, we're, we're making some pretty big changes here. And I think she's, I'm, I'm very happy. It's, it's nice, refreshing. And I think in the long term, we'll see some real good benefits. We have the auditors on site starting Monday. Is that correct? Yes. So that'll be nice. See if we can get an audit one of these years. Outstanding. Any additional councilmember comments? Seeing none, Madam City Attorney?
Just one. We discussed a little bit about the smoking restrictions. I did not read far enough last time when I was looking kind of off the cuff. There are a couple of sections in between, but there is a, a section forty-six dash four that prohibits smoking and use of e-cigarettes on city walking trails. It does not have a citation amount associated with that, but it does have the appropriate signs provided by the city. Should be posted in those areas. So I feel certain we will have a request for some signs indicating that smoking's prohibited on the walking trails.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk?
I don't have anything, but I also want to echo what a great job Liz is doing in the finance department. I'm really glad to have her a part of the team. That's all I have.
Outstanding. Thank you. I think we've wrapped up the meeting. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So I'll...
I've got a motion from Councilmember Gardner, seconded by Councilmember Scott. Any discussion on that matter? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you for attending and thank you for watching from home.